Good evening and welcome to the Dearborn Board of Education Regular Board Meeting for December 5, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Dambrojo.
Here.
Trustee Moszep.
Here.
Trustee Petchlikoff.
Here.
Trustee Watts.
Here.
President McDonald.
Here. Before we continue, I just want to say, we do have an interpreter or a couple of interpreters here tonight. So when you come to the podium, if you would speak slowly and clearly so that our interpreter has a chance to interpret what you're saying. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, Mr. Mohammed Abdelfatah would introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting our Snow Wolves. I have with me Rachel Snodgrass from Ms. Griselle's 3rd grade classroom and Nick Williams from Mr. D's 5th grade classroom. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Good job.
Come here, I have something I'd like to give you. Rachel, thank you. You did a marvelous job and we appreciate it. And Nick, thank you so much. Well done.
Good job.
Next item, please.
Musical performance, Edsel Ford High School's Orchestra.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Meyer. I'm the Music Resource Teacher. And one of the wonderful things about December is that the music that surrounds our lives during this month is some of the happiest and most memorable music around. It's been a tradition, each December, that we feature an ensemble from the Dearborn Schools to share some music of the season with you. This year, we want to bring that music to you tonight with the Edsel Ford School Orchestra, under the direction of Mrs. Sarah Brookheisen. Mrs. Brookheisen has been teaching for 13 years and has been in the Dearborn Schools for the past seven. Tonight, they will be performing the piece "Slain," arranged by Soon He Newbold. Let's welcome the Edsel Ford High Schools Orchestra, directed by Mrs. Brookheisen. [applause] I want to thank you again, every December and throughout the year, for allowing our music students to show their learning and just to be able to show them off. Thank you so much.
We certainly enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I just wanted to tell the students, and we were reminiscing, how much I think we all miss live music and hearing our students. It just forms my heart. So I just want to say thank you, students, and to the teachers as well. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Next item, superintendents' update, agenda items, retirements?
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. We're going to start with our normal with retirements. We have three this month. We want to both thank them for their years of service and congratulate them. Pamela Enock, 15 years of service. Lynn Murphy, over 14 years of service. Huad Zaban, over 27 years of service, if we could extend our appreciation. And moving right along through our agenda here, I wanted to just mention, you know, we continue to monitor COVID data in the district. It's remained very low. You know, there's a lot of other viruses and things going on, and our nurses are on top of it, always working with Wayne County. We have a great staff of nurses. I'm now going to call up Tom Wall to give a brief update on the fielding study that we are doing across the district.
Good evening, President, Dr. Maliko and board, and Ms. Harris. Just give you a quick update on our work with our consultant on a long-term master facility plan. Can you see it? I'll just make sure it's up. Okay. As you can see, we engaged them back in early September with the board approval. And you can see, there's basically two major phases. A Phase 1, which is more of the information gathering, visioning-type statement session session, and a Phase 2 where we're planning for the future. As you can see, it's broken down by month on top. We've kind of did the information gathering in the first couple of months, and early November, we had a very intensive and, you know, broad information gathering session where people came to the board office, they did building visits, and they actually went and talked to the students in their buildings. That went very well. We had a lot of information gathering. I'm not going to go through this, but this is just more for our future reading and the future of what the Step 1 is that we just finished, and Step 2, which we're going through right now. I'm not going to read all that because it's boring language. But necessary, so you understand what they're trying to accomplish. So as part of that three-day event, they heard from 462 people from the district, from all different breaths of life. You know, we're board members, administration, building principals, PTA, members from the community, a broad breadth of people to kind of get a good perspective. And we're also currently doing a survey, which I think will end here shortly. So within the, probably this week, where we had well over 1,000 already people that participated, and so that number is rising, to get more additional feedback, where they're going to take this information and kind of help put us together a long-term plan. So the main takeaway is from the November session, that people are very excited about talking about Dearborn in the future. What is our education program and our building's going to be like when we go forward? The community input is strong. That's nothing new that we don't know. The community has a very welcoming sense of coming to us and telling about their concerns, their visions, their beliefs. And obviously, all the different stakeholders are going to put together a nice, diverse, and comprehensive plan. Now, some of the other things I talked about is that we have barriers. No organization by itself doesn't have barriers. One of our barriers is obviously the finance side, because we don't get money from the state on for infrastructure. So that's a barrier, and they've kind of gone through some of those. And there also is a desire to balance tradition and innovation. So those are the things, main points, that they got away from November. They're going to take that data along with the survey data and come back in the new year to kind of give us some ideas of where it might want to go and get additional input. So we are not done by this process at all. The public's still going to have many opportunities to come in and talk about their feelings and thoughts and what their goals are for education in Dearborn. So that'll be part of more of Phase 2 planned as we go through. I'm going very quickly. So some of the things that are still happening here shortly, they've only did about 13, 14 visits in November, so they're going to finish the rest of the buildings come this week, towards the end of the week. There are four more public forums that are going to happen in mid to late January and possibly into early February. And at some point, we're going to have to have either a regular board meeting or a special session with the board, so you can get feedback of where they at, all the stuff that they learned, and the direction. So those are the things that are going to happen in the new year here shortly. And that's the quick update.
Trustee Barry.
For the community forums, I know you said we're going to schedule forum. Are we going to have one of those in the evening?
Correct. From my understanding, we talked about having one at each high school, so we can talk to the different feeder tracks, because each one has their own personality. And having a fourth one that's generic open for everybody. And that one might be online. I think that's what we're talking about, having at least one online one, and then three in-person ones at each of the high schools.
Thank you.
Trustee Petchlikoff.
Can we be sure when we have these forums, that it's well explained to the community members why this philosophy approach that we're doing with this organization, to meld teaching aspirations, styles, future plans for the way we want to teach our students, and how that correlates to the type of building and infrastructure needs we will be looking at? Because I think that even I was a little caught off guard with the first round, when the questions were all geared towards what we wanted to see for our students in the classroom, as opposed to, we all thought it was more focused on what our building needs were.
Right.
But I just want to make sure that the community at large understands we're trying to put together what we're looking at as our future teaching needs, and what our buildings have to provide in order to meet those needs.
Right, because we are students first. That's our motto. So looking at the curriculum side is an integral piece, decide how are we going to teach kids in the future? And is it the standard, you know, dirty in the classroom, brick and mortar, teacher in front? Those are the things that we're starting to make sure that we understand for Dearborn's vision of what they want to see for instruction. So that's probably why you were thrown off a little piece, because it's an important aspect, because the buildings then should support that vision. And so that's why it's slightly tilted, we're not talking just about infrastructure.
Right.
We're talking about a meld of the two to get a good vision plan for Dearborn.
And I just want to make sure it's clear to everyone why we're having those conversations.
Correct. And these meetings will be run by Fielding International, our consultant. So we'll make sure we share those thoughts with them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
So next, I'm going to call up Dr. Groover to give a media material update. One of the things we've been doing is listening for the public comments that have been coming, and we're trying to accommodate the community. And so we are coming up with a secondary list. It's going to take some time. That might be an opt-out option. It'll give parents another option. It's going to take some time, but we're working on that. And I'm going to let Dr. Groover do an update on other status of the book.
Good evening, President McDonald, trustees, and Dr. Maliko. The media specialists have completed the initial review process of the following books that have been formally challenged by parents, staff, and/or students. "The Hate U Give" was found to be appropriate for high school students. "Court of Thorn and Roses," which is a series, was found not to be appropriate for high school students and will be removed from all media centers. "The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian" was found to be appropriate for high school students. "Dear Martin" was found to be appropriate for high school students. "All American Boys" was appropriate for high school students. "All American Muslim Girls" is appropriate for high school students. "Shout" is appropriate for high school students. Two additional books that are not available in our media centers but were challenged by parents. "This Book Is Gay" and "All Boys Aren't Blue," both were found to be appropriate for high school students. We followed our process. The media specialists took this very seriously and following the process and doing the review, and then voting. These results are in addition to the results of the internal review process for "The Lovely Bones," "Eleanor and Park," "Flamer," "Push," and "Red, White, and Royal Blue" that were reported at last month's Board of Education meeting. Mr. Martin reported those. Just this afternoon, the media specialists met to do a review of five middle school books and two elementary school books that were challenged. We'll be emailing those results to the Board of Education tomorrow, and then reporting the results of that to the public soon. We haven't received any requests for reconsideration. And I want to remind parents that if they believe that a book is not appropriate for any student, that they can file a request for reconsideration, and we will have a reconsideration committee composed of parents, community members, teachers. I believe that we also have some social workers, psychiatrists, psychologists on that committee as well. Parents are also reminded that they can opt out of any particular book, or all books from a district media center. And as Dr. Maliko said, we're looking into how we can develop a challenged book list. That would be something that parents could also choose to opt out. We're looking in how we can tag those books and make sure that we can do that appropriately for parents. So this actually concludes, once we report the results from the five middle school books and the two elementary books that have been challenged. All of the books will have gone through the initial review process that have been challenged at this point. Now, the media specialists have been busy weeding their libraries and have come up with an internal list of books that they also want to do an initial review on and make sure that they are appropriate. So they'll be continuing that work as they go. Any questions?
Can I just mention, I appreciate the work you're doing with Mr. Martin, and I've seen you with the media specialists. I also want to let everyone know that we have other districts that are asking for our guidelines and policies. A lot of work's been put into it. It's been reviewed by our legal counsel in alignment with law, court decisions. So, you know, appreciate the work. I know it's been a lot of work. We want to listen to the community and take all opinions into consideration. And again, we do say, you know, we have that opt-out, and we're trying to come up with a secondary to accommodate more parents as well. Thank you, Dr. Groover.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you for that report. You answered my first question. Has there any books been, you know, reconsideration? Okay, my follow-up question to that is, are we doing a good job letting the parents know that they have this option? And the other question is, is there a time limit?
Is there a time limit?
Because the way I understand it, it's like an appeal process. Is there a time limit when they can come back and we can, you know, put the book up for reconsideration?
They can put a book up if it's been through the initial review process. They could come back and do a request for reconsideration at any time. Once it's gone through the reconsideration committee, though, we won't review the book again for five years. But at this point, no. They could file a request for reconsideration at any point. As far as how we publicize that, I know that our communications office has sent a lot of communications out about this. The requests for reconsideration, as well as our entire policy, are linked on the district website, pretty clearly, right in the middle. People are welcome to reach out to me as well, and I can walk them through the process.
Sure, sure. These are questions I, probably most of us, have been asked. So the other question is, if a parent, a parent asks for a book review, can a different parent ask for reconsideration?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I don't see why not. We're interested in hearing from the community as well.
100%.
So we've been very careful about following the policy and making sure that we're going through all the steps. But certainly, if a parent feels like that is not appropriate, we could look at getting a larger committee to look at that book as well.
And these results, they're going to be online or someplace?
That would be the list of the challenged books that we're trying to pull together.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm good.
Trustee Moszep.
I have a question about guidelines that we're giving library specialists for new titles, things that are coming through. Have our librarian specialists been given very consistent policies or guidelines on what books, or kind of the ideas where they would have them for age-appropriateness? Has that been clear to them?
So are you talking about for reviewing the books that are challenged, or for ordering new books? Because it's really the same, actually.
Or the new titles that are coming in.
So new titles. Also, we follow the same guidelines, looking at the publisher's rating, as well as making sure that the reviews support that. It's not just the publisher's rating, because publishers want to sell books, right? So we look at the independent reviews as well. We've also instituted a review process to make sure that the buildings aren't ordering in a vacuum. So that means that all of the high school librarians look at each other's list before things are ordered, and they talk about the books on the list. The same for middle schools, the same for elementary schools. Trustee Thorpe.
Do we have any media specialist read a book before we order it for the district, then?
We have had them read the book to review it. When the book comes in, their instructions have been that they need to put eyes on it, read through it, look at the pages, you know, look thoroughly through the book. They don't have an opportunity to read it before we order it, but they are going to do that when the book comes in.
And do we have each media specialist for their building read it, or do we just have one read it for all the buildings in the district?
We haven't gotten there yet. We've had all orders on hold right now, while we're all reviewing the orders so that they can be placed. But for the review process, they do have to actually, we have to have a majority have read the book, and the others have to have actually gone through the book. Some of the books are graphic novels and things like that, so it's looking at the pictures as well.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
So the guidelines, the way I understand it, are part of the process, and they're being put out on the website as part of the process, the guidelines for our media specialists. Am I correct to think that way?
Yes. The selection process is the same as the process for reviewing the books.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Information is out there.
Exactly. It's all on the website.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I want to thank you very much for the work that you're doing, and the work of the media specialists. It's a lot of work, and we appreciate it. And I also want to say that we are listening to our parents, and we heard that it's difficult for them to look at each individual book. So we are working on a process to make that easier as well. Yes. So thank you so much for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Groover. So moving along, just to announce that we do have our chatting events that are starting up. I've done these chatting events going back eight years now as superintendent, seven and a half, actually. But last year, you might recall, when the board did some evaluations, we talked about getting to more schools. I can only get to seven or eight. So now we have all executive directors leading in a chatting event, so we get to every school. And therefore, we're going to do, we're opening it up again for parents. We only did limited number for parents last year. We had staff last year, but we're going to open it up again for staff and parents. In that way, you know, parents can go, and they don't have to go to the school. We're going to publicize it. The building principals publicize it. They may not have a child at Fortson, but they want to go to the one at Fortson, that's fine, or Dearborn High, or wherever it may be, that's convenient for them. So I've been doing that for several years, and we're going to continue to do that, and talk about any issues they may have. I wanted to mention as well that we take, you know, student code of conduct with our students. We expect that it's followed. Student safety is a top priority, and we also are implementing preventative programs. We don't tolerate violence anywhere in the district. I know we're working hard on that. I know we have Ms. Elzayat here, Mr. Daklala, and others to work with the schools when these issues occur, and Mr. Mashur and the student services. So I just wanted to make it known that, you know, we will uphold the student code of conduct when issues occur, and we'll also take preventative action. I also want to, I have two more things here. I want to wish everyone, we won't have another board meeting. I know you will at the college, but you won't have one here at the P12 holiday break. And I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday break, two weeks, whether you celebrate Christmas or any other holiday, or you're traveling. I wish you and your family all the best for the holiday season. And the last thing I have is, today, it is Trustee Thorpe's birthday, and Trustee Petchlikoff yesterday. So, Pat, should we have them do this Exchange Club singing? Or what do you want to do there?
I don't know if we want to.
There's a deal. Or you can pay, and we don't sing.
We already have a musical performance.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for the update. Dr. Maliko, next item, please.
Recognition.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Barry.
Yes. What a treat. We started out with Edsel Ford High School Orchestra, especially the way we ended the last time we had a meeting in this room, on October 10. So I don't know if it's fortunately or unfortunately, I want to go back to that evening, and I do have some questions for the administration. I'm going to be mentioning some times, and the times I'm referring to would be Part 2 of that meeting. Part 1 was 47 minutes. The times I'll be mentioning are Part 2. So with 14:42, 14 minutes and 42 seconds into Part 2, President McDonald started her statement. And this is good, because I want some of these questions out there. Our constituents have not been nice to our president, pretty much blaming her for everything. And there were two colleagues of ours, of mine, of ours, that weren't here. So when she started her statement, about two and a half minutes into her statement, there was an interruption. And during that interruption, I watched students get up off the floor and start walking towards whatever was going on in that corner. And my thoughts were, oh, boy, this is not good. Shouldn't have had students sitting on the floor, and the fact that the students were heading that direction. And the reason I'm speaking slow is because I was advised to speak slow tonight, because there's interpretations. And I see Mr. Musson is smiling over there. So a minute later, after the eruption started, Dr. Maliko walked over to that end of the table and was talking to some of the administrators, cabinet members, probably, you know, trying to get things under control. And there were some more students. I have no idea why students would be allowed. I'll leave that alone for now. 19 minutes into Part 2, this is like an hour after our meeting started, I'm looking at a clip here with Dr. Maliko and a couple administrators having a discussion. And President McDonald continues with her statement. And two seconds later, a private citizen pops out of nowhere and starts addressing the crowd. I'm like, okay, what's going on? And the right thing for myself, for any one of us to do is start asking some questions, but it was kind of like a dangerous situation with those kids in a way. Not even 30 seconds later, President McDonald continued with her statement. At 2020, it was clear
That I know that our communications office has sent a lot of communications out about this. The request for reconsideration, as well as our entire policy, are linked on the district website, pretty clearly, right in the middle. People are welcome to reach out to me as well, and I can walk them through the process.
Sure, sure. These are questions I, probably most of us, have been asked. So, the other question is if a parent, a parent asks for a book review, can a different parent ask for reconsideration?
Yeah, I think that that, I mean, I don't see why not. We want, we're interested in hearing from the community as well.
Hundred percent, yeah.
So, we've been very careful about following the policy and making sure that we're going through all the steps. But certainly, if a parent feels like that is not appropriate, we could look at getting a larger committee to look at that book as well.
And these results, they're going to be online or someplace?
That would be the list of the challenged books that we're trying to pull together.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm good.
Trustee Mosim.
I have a question about guidelines that we're giving library specialists, or new titles, things that are coming through. Are librarian specialists been given very consistent policies or guidelines on what books, or kind of the ideas where they would have them for age appropriateness? Has that been clear to them?
So, are you talking about for reviewing the books that are challenged, or for ordering new books? Because it's really the same, actually.
Or the new titles that are coming in.
So, new titles, they also, we follow the same guidelines, looking at the publisher's rating, as well as making sure that the reviews support that. It's not just the publisher's rating, because publishers want to sell books, right? So, we look at the independent reviews as well. We've also instituted a review process to make sure that the buildings aren't ordering in a vacuum. So, that means that all of the high school librarians look at each other's list before things are ordered, and they talk about the books on the list. The same for middle schools, the same for elementary schools.
Do we have any media specialist read a book before we order it for the district, then?
We have had them read the book to review it. When the book comes in, their instructions have been that they need to put eyes on it, read through it, look at the pages, you know, look thoroughly through the book. They don't have an opportunity to read it before we order it, but they are going to do that when the book comes in.
And do we have each media specialist for their building read it? Or do we just have one read it for all the buildings in the district?
We haven't gotten there yet. We've had all orders on hold right now, while we're all reviewing the orders, so that they can be placed. But for the review process, they do have to actually, we have to have a majority have read the book, and the others have to have actually gone through the book. Some of the books are graphic novels and things like that, so it's looking at the pictures as well.
Thank you.
Trustee Bailey?
So, the guidelines, the way I understand it, are part of the process, and they're being put out on the website, as part of the process, the guidelines for our media specialists. Am I correct to think that way?
Yes, the selection process is the same as the process for reviewing the books.
Exactly. Information is out there, so.
Exactly. It's all on the website.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you very much for the work that you're doing, and the work of the media specialists. It's a lot of work, and we appreciate it. And I also want to say that we are listening to our parents, and we heard that it's difficult for them to look at each individual book, so we are working on a process to make that easier as well.
Yes.
So, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. So, moving along, just to announce that we do have our chatting events that are starting up. We, I've done these chatting events going back eight years now, as superintendent, seven and a half, actually. But last year, you might recall, when the board did some evaluations, we talked about getting to more schools. I can only get to seven or eight. So, now we have all executive directors leading in a chatting event, so we get to every school. And therefore, we're going to do, we're opening it up again for parents. We only did limited number for parents last year. We had staff last year, but we're going to open it up again for staff and parents. And that way, you know, parents can go, and they don't have to go to the school. We're going to publicize it, the building principals publicize it. They can, you know, they may not have a child at Fortson, but they want to go to the one at Fortson, that's fine, or Dearborn High, or wherever it may be, that's convenient for them. So, I've been doing that for several years, and we're going to continue to do that, and talk about any issues they may have. I wanted to mention as well, that we take, you know, student code of conduct with our students. We expect that it's followed. We, student safety is a top priority, and we also are implementing preventative programs. We don't tolerate violence anywhere in the district. I know we're working hard on that. I know we have Ms. Elzayat here, Mr. Daklala, and others to work with the schools when these issues occur, and Mr. Mashur and Student Services. So, I just wanted to make it known that, you know, we, we will uphold the student code of conduct when issues occur, and we'll also take preventative action. I also want to, I have two more things here. I want to wish everyone, we won't have another board meeting. I know you will at the college, but you won't have one here at the P12 holiday break. And I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday break, two weeks, whether you celebrate Christmas or any other holiday, or you're traveling. I wish you and your family all the best for the holiday season. And the last thing I have is, today, it is Trustee Thorpe's birthday, and Trustee Pelichkov yesterday. So, Pat, should we have them do this exchange club singing, or what do you want to do? There's a deal. Or you can pay, and we don't sing.
We already have a musical performance.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for the update, Dr. Maleko. Next item, please.
Recognition?
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Barry.
Yes. What a treat, we started out with Edsoford High School Orchestra, especially the way we ended the last time we had a meeting in this, in this room, on October 10th. So, I don't know if it's fortunately, or unfortunately, I want to go back to that, that evening, and I do have some questions for the administration. I'm going to be mentioning some times, and the times I'm referring to would be part two of that meeting. Part one was 47 minutes. The times I'll be mentioning are part two. So, with 14:42, 14 minutes and 42 seconds into part two, President McDonald started her statement. And this is good, because I want some of these questions out there. Our constituents have not been nice to our president, pretty much blaming her for everything. And there were two colleagues of ours, of mine, of ours, that weren't here. So, when she started her statement, about two and a half minutes into her statement, there was an interruption. And during that interruption, I watched students get up off the floor and start walking towards whatever was going on over in that corner. And my thoughts were, oh, boy, this is not good. Shouldn't have had students sitting on the floor, and the fact that the students were heading that direction. And the reason I'm speaking slow, because I was advised to speak slow tonight, because there's interpretations, and I see Mr. Musson is smiling over there. So, a minute later, after the eruption started, Dr. Maleko walked over to that end of the table, and was talking to some of the administrators, cabinet members, probably, you know, trying to get things under control. And there were some more students. I have no idea why students would be allowed. I'll leave that alone for now. Nineteen minutes into part two, this is like an hour after our meeting started, I'm looking at a clip here with Dr. Maleko and a couple administrators having a discussion, and President McDonald continues with her statement. And two seconds later, a private citizen pops out of nowhere and starts addressing the crowd. I'm like, okay, what's going on? And the right thing for myself, for any one of us to do, is start asking some questions, but it was kind of like a dangerous situation with those kids in a way. Not even 30 seconds later, President McDonald continued with her statement. At 2020, it was clearly things were under control. Looking at President McDonald continuing her discussion. At 2040, she's still going on. At 22 minutes, that's when Secretary Watts read the instructions for the citizen participation. 20 seconds later, I chimed in, talking to the audience, saying, we welcome citizen participation. Even against, sometimes our lawyers telling us that you can limit citizen participation, we said, no, we welcome citizen participation. As I'm saying this, there's still discussions going on with the administration, administrators, and one of the administrators walks over to Dr. Maleko, talking to him. And a very odd thing happened. The gentleman that kind of took over our meeting popped right back in over here, and started addressing the crowd again, making statements that if, if we don't comply with what we're about to say, they're going to shut the meeting down. I don't know who gave him instructions to say that, but he said that. And that kind of got the audience a little bit agitated some more. Now, I remember, I'll call him Bill, because that's his name, one of the officers was here. I was looking at him directly. He was looking at me. He was standing right there, and he was shaking his head like, this is not good. He wasn't wrong. Few seconds later, another private citizen jumps into the discussion and says, we've been informed by the fire marshal that we have too many people in this room. And I can hear Trustee Watts saying that this is becoming a dangerous situation, we probably have to take a recess. So, I'm very thankful for that, because it was, most important, it was a very dangerous situation for those three boys that were standing right there. So, I guess my question is, Dr. Maleko, is who decided to turn our school board meeting, it's our school board meeting, over to a private citizen, then to two of them? And if anybody, who actually did speak, who did speak to the fire marshal that night?
I'm not aware of anyone speaking to the fire marshal, to be honest. As far as that happening, I think there was a lot going on, and we were all kind of dealing with the situation at hand. But whoever made the comments about the fire marshal, from what I was informed, no one did. It wasn't me, or anyone on our team, so.
We're having a discussion here, thank you.
Yeah. So, they must have just said what they said. I, you know, I don't.
Okay, so that goes back to the first question. As President McDonald's making her statement, given the audience instructions, Secretary Watts was given more instructions, and I was asking some more, I wanted to know if, you know, the speakers, our parents in the district, if they live in the district. As we're saying, as we're trying to get on that same page, and at that point, I mean, you can go visit the video, it's very clear that things were under control. Why did our, why did our, our school board meeting get turned over to a private citizen?
I can address that to a certain degree. I was under the assumption, or I was told, that this private citizen had, was like leading the group. And at that point, things had gotten out of hand. I had no control. I wasn't able to get back control of the situation. I was concerned about the students in the front row, and I was looking to, if someone could talk to, if they were the leader, and I wasn't sure, that's what I was told, that they were leading this group. So, I thought, okay, give this person, who is the leader of this group, an opportunity to address that group. That may help the situation. It didn't. But at that point, we were in the moment, and I was just looking for a way to get things under control, because it was a dangerous situation, and I was concerned about the students in the, on the floor, and other things as well.
With all due respect, I'll say Roxanne, because you're my friend, you're not just our president tonight, you were in the middle of your statement. You were still putting your statement out there, okay? And it was very clear, please visit the video, things were under control. There was no chaos. There was nothing going on when the gentleman popped up the first time.
Okay.
The first time, and started addressing the crowd.
Well, I'm going by memory, so I guess I should go back and look at the video.
I have it right here. This, that night really bothered me, like it bothered a lot of us.
Oh, yeah, bothered me as well.
I mean, I still revisit and saying, thank you, God, for nobody getting hurt, okay? But at the end of the day, it's our school board meeting. Administration's responsible for the safety, board members, the audience, everybody else in here, okay? That's why I'm directing my questions towards Dr. Maleko. The first time that man popped up here and started talking, no, you were still, in the frame of mind, you were reading your statement, okay? And you did thank him, because he addressed the crowd, but I heard from some people in the crowd, please don't interrupt me tonight. Please don't interrupt me tonight. I heard from some people in the, in the audience, saying, why, why him? And they, that really agitated some of the people that were just here for other reasons. Why did we turn over our, you know, did you make that decision to have him? It's, the second time, you did, you did say that Mr. So-and-so is going to address, and that's when it got really, really out of hand, because they were making statements on our behalf, which I think, right now, I can honestly say, that weren't truthful. That, you know, nobody here, nobody, nobody. I mean, there was five of us here, superintendent, I didn't speak to a fire marshal, I didn't speak to anybody. So, just, just want to make sure that, you know, you are taking a beating out there. You are being called names, and you are, you're getting accused for everything that happened that night, which is not fair to you. But I'm trying to figure out here, A, let's, let's put things in place where this never happens again. Like, I looked around this room when I first came in here, what is the capacity of this room? How come it's not posted?
We have that. Ms. Elzayat?
Yes.
You, you have the capacity listed, right?
Yes.
100. So, it's 136 plus the eight or nine of us up here. Please, let's post it on the wall, because a lot of places I go to.
I believe it's posted.
Where?
Right here. I thought there were, I think.
Okay.
We've.
Okay, thank you, thank you. But let's, let's just like make sure it's not a note that somebody just printed. Let's just, let's put it up on the wall, where it's obvious, please.
So, Trustee Barry, I would just say this, that that meeting, and David's been at many of these meetings, he says he's never seen something like that in, you know, 20-something years, and he's been here at the board meetings for a long time. I think we all learned from it, and we met, and we came up with a plan, which is why we implemented a different plan at Stout, and that's why you see what's going on here today. It's all learning from what happened. We, the truth is, we didn't expect that. We really didn't. We had never seen it before. We learned from it, we're going to improve it, move forward, make sure it won't, will never happen again. I can assure you of that.
Never, ever let students sit on the floor during a meeting, A. B, we did have the heads up that something, something was brewing in the community. We did have the heads up, because we actually had extra police officers here that night. So, maybe, maybe, and I'm not playing Monday morning quarterback here, maybe a location should have been considered. And the thing that's, you know, you go back to that night, if, if we knew, or had the heads up that something was brewing, it probably was a bad idea to have our special needs students here that night, because we know how they react to visual and, you know, noise. So, that's just something.
Sure.
In the, in the future, just.
We, we really did not expect that big of a.
Nobody did.
I think what we thought was, you might remember the August of 2021, when we had, you know, three police officers that ended up coming, and it kind of got a little, Trustee, or President Thorpe at the time, we had to pause. We thought maybe something like that might be coming, but not what happened. We didn't. By the Stout meeting, we knew that that was coming, so that's why I was on the phone with Chief Shaheen, Ms. Elzayat, we were over at Stout. We had meet, a lot of meetings within those two days, and then we had a follow-up meeting to make sure that we're planning for either here. And then my communications with President McDonald have been decisions as to why, like last month, we did it at Stout, just to be safe. This month, we felt comfortable coming here, based on the information, you know, we were getting, so. But I think we learn from, we learn all the time, we move forward, we improve, and, yeah, I know, Trustee Watts, you were in one of those meetings where we went over a lot of the information.
And that's why I wanted to say is that, I believe, within 48 hours, I felt that what happened was something that I think none of us wanted to see happen again, because I did see those students who were sitting in the chairs, and it was not a safe situation for the students who were sitting on the floor, or the students who were here to say the pledge of allegiance, and it was overstimulating for them. I mean, I saw that when they received a round of applause, they immediately went and closed their ears. And within 24 to 48 hours after that meeting, I had asked for a debrief, because I thought that it was essential, that while our memories were still fresh, we knew the details as to how those events unfolded, and that we made sure going forward, before we had Thursday's meeting even held, that we learned from it, and we moved forward, so that it was safe for everybody. Because we want all of our parents here, we want our students here, we want our community here, but I don't want people who are standing, who are going to be, if something were to happen, nobody would have been able to get to anybody, or six people deep standing. And that's not welcoming to anybody. Nothing says welcome than a packed room. So, we did have a debrief, and everybody, all board members were invited to those debriefs, because I thought it was important to be able to have those details fresh in everyone's mind. So, I want to thank the administration and all of those who did participate in it, and it was via Zoom, and it was accessible to all of our board members. So, we did have that. So, thank you.
So.
Yes, Trustee Barry.
The debrief was, was great, and I applaud you for that. And when, you know, we forget things, we're human, we forget things. So, the timing was perfect, but I also thought it was still important for, for our, there are people tonight that probably wanted to come to this meeting, but chose not to, because they feel intimidated. I just want those people to know, I just want to make sure everybody here understands that, yeah, that we're safe in here. We need, they need to know that. So, I mean, this is not something that, okay, something happened, a crazy meeting happened in Dearborn, made national news, and we moved on. No, there was multiple meetings with administration, with board members, and now tonight, that, you know, it's out there, that, yeah, no, this affects us. This really affects us. This was, I mean, very concerning. Usually, I'm the guy that takes over in a situation like that. I kind of froze, because I keep reminding, I keep seeing those kids standing there, and I'm thinking to myself, they're going to get trampled. Anything happens, they're going to get trampled. So, that was, that's, thank you, Mr., Dr. Maleko, but also for my colleagues, never again do we lose control of a meeting. Never again do we lose control of a meeting. Nobody interrupts this school board meeting. Nobody interrupts a speaker. You have so much power. I was told last time, I was told last time, and I know, we were under advisement of, I get that part, but I was told last time that we don't have any rights. You, there's a lot of power behind that gavel, and whoever comes in next year, and what went the year after, understand that, that we don't lose control of our meetings. And starting tonight, we will stay in control of our meetings, and nobody's going to take over our meetings again.
If I can interrupt you right there, Mr. Barry, I think that started a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, after the second half of that October meeting, I think things have been under control, and we've been doing a good job.
Hundred percent. That's what I'm saying, never again does that.
Absolutely.
Happen again.
And that was a situation.
That empowered people, thinking that they can come in here and do that all the time. No, no, that's not the way that works.
And it hasn't happened since.
Exactly.
Can I commend Chief Shaheen and the Police Department, working with us? We have the SRO and then you know, lots of hours in time on the phone spent. I think, over those couple of days, I think I talked to Ms. Elzayat 10 times in one day, and Chief Shaheen 10 times in one day, and you probably five or six that same day. So, there was a lot of meetings put in place, we have a lot of protocols, there's actually written protocol now, that were, was written, so we learned from that. I can tell you, too, we were at the, you know, the MASB meeting, and other boards across the state, like superintendents at my association, were in awe, they had never seen that either. So, they were, you know, they were showing support, that this shouldn't happen, but they were showing support for what we had to deal with. I know we presented at the conference with Trustee Thorpe, and some of those comments were coming up. So, we were the talk of the state, because of what was going on. We had 1,300 people at that second meeting, so working with the police to control that. When I said that to my colleagues, they were like, the look on their eyes, you know, because no one experiences that. So, we're ready for it. I think, too, my colleagues, when these questions have come up, whether it's on the books or other things, I'm the one that's able to answer a lot of it, because we've dealt with it and gone through it, experienced as a team, unfortunately, but we also now have improved, and I think that's why they come to us for leadership on a lot of things, like our book guidelines. We're getting constant communications to receive that information with Dr. Grover presenting. So, yeah, I think.
It's great that you're pointing out this information. People need to hear that. Nobody should feel intimidated coming to their, their school district's school board meeting. Yeah, I was at a training session last week in Gibraltar, and it was, yeah, a couple superintendents, a couple board members, shared the same thoughts with me. Where's Tom, by the way?
Ms. Superintendent Conway sent me a message, and she spoke very highly of you in the text message. I think she, you know, that's too, like, we were having, from some of those districts, we were having some of the parents come to that meeting that weren't even from our district, that were just for different issues. And I had a couple superintendents that kind of said, unfortunately, they came, they, from our district, they were coming to your meeting.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, she did send me a message.
Thank you, thank you. I believe, Trustee Pet.
Yes, Trustee Petelka.
Well, just to add in regards to your comments, that everybody knew this was going to be that type of a meeting with that kind of a crowd. Not all of us are plugged into the same media systems. I learned that night that the mosques had been approached, several mosques had been approached to encourage people to come to the meeting that night. I had no idea, prior to that, that evening, that they were encouraging people to come from a variety of areas. So, I was not anticipating the size of the crowd that was there either, because I'm not plugged into that message. So, the other thing I would say is, what we tell our kids all the time, see something, say something. We all have to be sharing the information that we have heard, so that we're all on the same page, and we all have the same information, and we can be better prepared moving forward, because Dr. Maleko may very well not have known that those kinds of crowds were being elicited to come and participate that night, and we wouldn't have a heads up the same way. So, I encourage every one of us, whoever your, your groups are, that you talk to, that if you hear something, please, if you think it's important enough, we need to share it, so that we're all prepared.
Of course, of course. The, the original meeting, nobody anticipated what was going to happen. But what you're referring to, some of the comments made at the mosques, that was in between that Monday and the Thursday meeting, and it was on social media, and we pretty much talked about that before the Thursday meeting. So, we had the heads up on that.
No, I believe it was, it was said on Sunday night.
It was, yeah.
You are correct, you are correct, you are correct. Yeah, the one you're referring to was said on Sunday night, yes.
Yeah, no, it was, my understanding was from the first meeting, that, that had been occurring.
Like I said earlier, we're human, we're going to forget, and some of us, some of us are getting older, so I know.
All I, all I want to make sure is, is that we, we all work together in order to protect our meeting establishment, and, and that we're prepared to have decorum whenever we move forward.
Just for the record, there was a shot against Jim, not you.
Trustee Thorpe?
But he's getting older.
We talked about capacity in the room, and I was in attendance for this, part two of the meeting, and then the November meeting, where they were both at Stout. Remind me, what is the rule on where we have to, how, what time do we have to have a meeting location posted by, before a meeting? Is it 48, 18 hours?
Eighteen hours.
Okay, so, we've got enough time, if we're hearing about a large attendance, that we can still switch a location up to that point. What about if we're in a situation where it's an unexpected number of people showing? I know we can do a secondary room, but when would we decide to make a decision that maybe we're better off postponing a meeting until we can get a larger facility? Have we given thought to that?
Yeah, that's.
Hundred percent agree with you there.
That's exactly what we did.
Right.
There, there are rules to the Openshooting Meeting Act, and, and once you call to recess, then you have to reconvene.
But you're saying, I'm not meaning recess. If we, all of a sudden, there's a wave of people that are going to be at a board meeting, before we even start a board meeting, do we have the ability where we can delay it?
Yes.
Yes. In fact, if we have two, so we have overflow capacity in the, in room down the hall, ready, set up like we did at Stout, it's available. If we get to the point where it's too much, then we would have to either adjourn, or if we knew in advance, we would have to change the. we knew in advance, we would have to change the meeting to a larger location.
But you still have to have 18 hours notice.
You'd still have to have the notice, yeah. So, and our legal counsel chimed in on that, so.
I'm clearly understanding Trustee Thorpe's question. You have to post a meeting, a public meeting. You have certain rules you have to post. You can cancel the meeting.
Right.
And repost a new one.
Yes.
You only have to post it if it's a change, because it's set for now. Is that correct? Yeah.
Because they were all approved early.
They're all approved early.
Yes.
But if there's a change, you have to post it.
I just want to make sure. Doesn't mean that we have to get in here, open the meeting, and.
Right.
No. Okay. Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Right.